Okay, um, welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen. It's April eighteenth at nine thirty A M. And as usual, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Public for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, you got it right. Um, so for today's meeting, we basically need to approve what was um, what happened at the Board of Finance public hearing the other night. Let me just get back on here. Um, we just, we have to approve some operating motions, the capital highlights, set the referendum date, and then look at the mailer and approve the mailer. Um, I I'm sure everybody's read this. We've heard this multiple times. I wasn't planning to read all of the changes that were made at the Board of Finance meeting, unless somebody would like to go through all of them again. And if I don't hear a yes, I'm gonna move along. Um, so we have the motions um provided from council in the timeline. Um, it's today is enough time to get the mailer out for the referendum on the tenth. So with that, I'm gonna jump over to the final resolution and referendum questions. Um, so I'm gonna read these and then I'm gonna have um somebody on the phone read the questions for the referendum ballot. But pursuant to section eight oh eight of the town charter, the following motions were introduced at the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen on April eighteenth today, twenty twenty four. Uh, be it resolved that the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purposes of paying the expenses of the Board of Selectmen annual budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth twenty twenty five shall be approved and implemented in the amount of twenty eight million dollars, eight hundred and eighty four thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars. I I would need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Okay, so. Who took the, who was the motion?
Steve.
Okay, Steve, I keep seeing Curtis talking, so it's confusing me. Okay, Steve and um Diana, okay. Um, oh, oh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Did you, Kevin, did you say aye? Did, did everybody say aye? I can't hear. I don't know if I have a delay.
Aye.
On mute. I don't know if that matters.
Okay, Kevin, did you say aye?
Um, I will vote yes. Um, I'm having some latency issues with the audio, and so I'm gonna try to connect on a different device uh while it's happening. I apologize.
Okay, that's okay. Alright, so, so that motion is passed. Um, the second one is be it resolved that the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purposes of paying the expenses of the Board of Ed annual budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth twenty twenty five shall be approved and implemented in the amount of eighty five million, two hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty four dollars.
So moved.
Heather and Diana, um, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Kevin, if he could just wave even, we'll take that. Okay, okay. Um, the next item is be it resolved that the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purposes of paying the expenses of sewer use fund, sewer treatment plant, residential property fund, Parks and Rec Special Revenue Fund, non-public schools, debt retirement slash capital, capital non-recurring, annual budgets for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth twenty twenty five shall be approved and implemented in the amount of nineteen million dollars, five hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and ninety four dollars.
So moved.
So moved.
Um, Diana, Heather, um, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then the next piece is in accordance with section four oh six, automatic referendum and eight oh eight duties of the Board of Finance on the budget of the charter, the recommended operating but operating budgets will be submitted to a referendum in the following form. So we have five questions here, and um then we will approve them as a whole, but if somebody would like to volunteer to read the five, I'm open to that suggestion. Okay, Diane, Diana, go ahead, cuz you're probably the only one that's.
You want me to read? Okay, questions for referendum ballot. One, shall the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purposes of paying the expenses of the Board of Selectmen annual budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty five, be approved and implemented in the amount of twenty eight million, eight hundred and eighty four thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars?
You can read them all.
Yeah, go ahead.
Shall the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purpose of paying the expenses of the Board of Education annual budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty five, be approved and implemented in the amount of eighty five million, two hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty four dollars? Three, shall the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purposes of paying the expenses of sewer use fund, sewer treatment plan, residential property fund, Parks and Recreation Special Revenue Fund, non-public schools, debt retirement, capital and capital non-recurring annual budgets for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty five, be approved and implemented in the amount of nineteen million, five hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and ninety four dollars? Four, shall the town of Simsbury appropriate an additional four hundred and ninety five thousand dollars for an aggregate appropriation of two million, seven hundred sixty four thousand dollars for the rehabilitation of the old Drake Hill Road Bridge, and authorizing an additional bonds and notes in the amount of four hundred and ninety five thousand dollars for an aggregate appropriation of two million, four hundred and eighty four thousand dollars to finance a portion of said appropriation? Five, shall the town of Simsbury appropriate nine hundred thousand dollars in state grant funds, one million, thirty two thousand, eight hundred and eighty one dollars in donations, and five hundred thousand dollars in capital reserve funds in addition to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in capital reserve funds previously appropriated for an aggregate amount of two million, seven hundred eighty two thousand, eight hundred and eighty one dollars for improvements to our Alexander Banshell addition?
Thank you. So can I get a motion to approve the questions for the referendum?
I like that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Um, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then lastly, um, we um asked for a motion to set the date of Friday, May tenth, twenty twenty four, for the automatic referendum pursuant to section four oh six of the town charter from six A M. to eight P M. At Simsbury Town Hall, nine thirty three Hot Meadow Street.
So moved.
Second.
Um, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the next thing that we get to do is um, so um, it be it resolved that upon the motion duly made, seconded and adopted, the reading into the minutes of the full text of the resolution set out below is waived, which is all the stuff that's behind this sheet, I I believe. Um, and we can record in these minutes, immediately preceding these minutes. So what we need to do is per Melissa, um, be it resolved that the Board of Finance and Selectmen recommends and approves the following. And and I'm, someone has to read all of these, and I was thinking if somebody else would like to read these, I'll offer that chance up to somebody else on this call that has access to reading these.
Well, Tom, I'll do it. I'll read fast. Ready?
Yeah, ready.
Upon motion duly made, seconded and adopted, the reading into the minutes of the full, oh, do I, do I have to read that? Resolution set out below is waived. Copies of resolution haven't been made available to those in attendance and recorded in these records immediately preceding these minutes. Resolved that the Board of Finance slash Selectmen recommend and approve the following. C I P number, general purpose project funds, highway bonds, highway pavement management bonding, one million, eleven dollars, one million, eleven thousand, two hundred and sixty seven dollars. Do I need to do the itemization or can I just do the lump sum?
I think you can just do the lump sum.
Thank you. One point six million sidewalk reconstruction, two hundred and twenty three thousand, four hundred. Old Drake Hill Road Flower Bridge Rehabilitation, two million, seven hundred and sixty four thousand. Town Hall Rooftop Units, two hundred and seventy five thousand. Municipal Site and Safety Improvements at Town Hall, four hundred and sixty thousand. Barn and Facility Repairs on Wocat Road, two hundred and seventy five thousand. Dam Evaluation and Repairs to the Stoddard Dam Breach, a hundred and seventy one thousand dollars. General purpose, per, yeah, general purpose projects, non-bonds. Memorial Pool redesign out of the Capital Reserve Fund, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center Banshell Edition, two million, seven hundred and eighty two thousand, eight hundred and eighty one. Public Works slash Highway Truck Replacement and Plow, two hundred and sixty six thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. Tariffill Connection East Coast Greenway Gap Closure, four hundred and fifty thousand. Under Sewer Use Assessment Funds and Grants, Sewer Replacement at Pine Hill Supplemental, two hundred thousand dollars. School Projects in the Form of Bonds, District Network Infrastructure, three hundred and fifty thousand. District Flooring Improvements, two hundred and fifty thousand. Simsbury High School Auditorium and Amphitheater Improvements, four hundred thousand. Toon Hills Replacement Roof, one million, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Nicely done, deputy.
Thanks.
Um, so I'd like to ask for a motion to approve all of the capital items.
Move to approve as presented.
Perfect. Uh, is there a second? Um, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, uh, the last item is approving the mailer. So we send this out every year. The Board of Ed and Town split the cost and include information relative, relative? Is that the word I wanted? What was the, um, that wasn't the word I was looking for, but anyway. Well, to, you know, acknowledge the budget for this year. Um, I had some comments on it. I don't know if anyone else does, so if they wanna speak up, they're welcome to before I do.
I, I think my comments are similar to yours, Wendy, in that, and I, I saw the response from Amy and Melissa and understand the response, but I bore the special revenue other budgets uh for number four and five. Um, I don't know how we can make it more clear that for the Flower Bridge and the SIMPAC, we're not asking the town to fund those entire amounts um in their entirety in this referendum and out of this budget um, with with Drake Hill just being an additional appropriation and then for SIMPAC, like, there's just a portion of that also coming out of reserves, so not impacting the tax um implications and and the mill rate and uh, you know, what the, what the tax increase will be, so that they understand that their tax increase is not being affected by these projects. So take the, you know, these projects out and the tax implications are still the same. So I don't know how we go about doing that with limited space on the mailer. Um.
Yeah, I was, can I just jump in? Cuz I called Melissa earlier on this.
Okay.
Um, so the, the PAC is that this is the first time that it's, it's on, it's been voted on at all and showed up on the C I P. So I don't, I don't have as much a problem with that one because the referendum item, like, really showed the total breakdown of each.
Yeah.
Cost. I do have the concerns on the Flower Bridge. Um, and it does break it down a bit in the referendum question, but I, I did include this in my first selectmen's report is that, and I, I wanted to say it the other night, three hundred thousand dollars in twenty two, twenty three, and then another one point nine in twenty three, twenty four has already been approved by the Board of Selectmen and actually was intended to not impact the residents because it was supposed to be ARPA dollars for the good of the community. I don't know how to show that, and Melissa, you know, we showed in the referendum question that it's only a five hundred thousand dollar hit with the rest already approved. But I, I don't know, you know, I mean, people are, hopefully people are smart enough when they go to the, to vote that they're going to read each referendum item, but you don't want people going in with a preconceived notion based on the mailer. So I don't know what, what to do with that.
I don't think people real, like, I, I'm not sure how many people realize when you say we're using um capital reserves. With affect their, you know, the mill rate and what their tax increase is going to be. So.
So my only thought on the Flower Bridge, which I shared with Wendy, was um, actual projects, do we take the dollar amounts off entirely? And then since we don't show the dollar amounts, you know, under number one, number two, number three, and for number four, we could, um, which is actually, it shows on the C I P, is to call it supplemental. So to say, you know, Flower Bridge Rehabilitation supplemental. Um, and then leave number five as is, but take off those total dollar amounts and let the questions speak for themselves at the ballot. It's entirely up to you, but that was just the only thought I had. Um.
Well, that does make sense, since you're not putting dollar amounts on anything else. It seems to be particularly then highlighting the dollar amounts in those when there's not dollar amounts in any other. Um, even with number three, you don't have, it's not like for the special projects that we have dollar amounts for all three of them. There's only the dollar amounts on the two of them.
I think that's a better solution, Melissa, to take out the dollar amount. Um, I don't know if there's a way to ref, when will people, the referendum questions will be posted like with our stuff, right?
Yep. In fact, they're already up there, so everything from the other night um at the Board of Finance meeting, that whole package already on the budget page, but yes, we'll have a sample ballot posted online. Um. I don't know when that will be exactly, but um, obviously in advance of the referendum, we'll see the ballot. Um.
Is it poss, is it possible, and I, I don't wanna like junk this up, right? But to, to just say, refer to the detailed referendum questions, I, I, you know, for what's behind it, so at least they, people know there's more to just these line items. I mean, I'm, I know there's space lit issue, so I'm just looking for people to weigh in on what they think. If they don't care, you know, or if they don't think it's an issue, speak up.
Uh, so my, my thinking on it is I'd be okay if we include a number on there that says what's new revenue or 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 um something that's new thi- this year, the supplemental appropriation. Um, for, for instance, on the, on the Flower Bridge, but I um, uh, just wanna clarify, the intent of removing the dollar, is it because we feel like the voters might be inclined to vote it down because the number is too high?
Um, yeah, I guess that's, I, I guess that's my, because it's not exactly, we're not paying that personally. The town is not paying that amount, so that's my thinking.
Yeah, I think it just, it's misrepresenting, it's the total cost of the project, but exactly, it's like, it's not what we're asking the voters to fund from town funds. And I just feel the, the total dollar amount with that explanation is misleading. It's not whether it's voted down or or not. I want people to have the correct information on what they're exactly voting on. And although they have to vote for the entire project amount, the amount that the town would be paying for is not representative in either one of those. Uh, so it's not to sway a vote on removing or not removing, it's just additional information. I wanna make sure people understand what they're voting on.
So the simplest answer to me is to take out the dollars.
You know, I, I'm not a historian on the uh budget mailers, even though of course I read them religiously. Um, what is our past practice on publishing a number or not publishing the number? Um, my concern um on the other side of this would be that um it would, it, it, there could be an a, our intent is to add clarity. I would regret it if voters felt like we were hiding information from them.
Correct. Transparency.
Yeah, good.
I thought that, um, I agree, Kevin. I thought that uh we were just going to put in bold or, you know, is this, is there a way to um, or even box it of just what is included in this budget, the five hundred thousand, and but still have the other information, maybe perhaps put, um, well, I mean, someone will see grants, things like that, but um, even put what was approved in previous budgets, maybe put the years that was approved, pre-approved this time.
On the mailer or is your question about the ballot itself?
Well, I, since that came up in the Board of Finance, I'll just say, I, we can't modify the ballot, right? I'm, I'm ninety nine point nine percent confident. We can't bold, underline, emphasize or anything or otherwise try to influence um the voter at the ballot box, um, you know, on, on how they're gonna vote. So the opportunity to do that is in this mailer. Sorry, Heather, to overlap what you're trying to say, but we, we, this is our chance.
Yeah.
So my question.
So Heather, I think what, I was, what you, I think you were saying is, I'm not sure, is, is for each of the four, just have like a, a, a box with the breakdown of, of the costs? Is that what you were saying?
Yes, just something in the mailer that, that uh, clarifies things a bit better. And I apologize, I, I'm on my phone, so I don't have the, um, I went through it, but I don't have it sitting right in front of me to make specific.
Well, if, this is kind of, if you could, if we could shrink the key facts about the public schools, we would have some room there to put a section, you know, the, you know, five hundred dollar, and then the, the, what, the three hundred plus one point nine pre-approved or pre whatever, and then the PAC, you know, five hundred, the nine hundred state, and then the remaining, like, which is what's in the referendum wording.
So my question then leads to, why aren't we putting the numbers next to one through three if we're including numbers on four and five?
Cuz they're above, I think. Most of them are above, well, but for, for the Selectmen Town and Board of Ed budgets.
Diana, I've just been going back looking at a few of them. It's just been, I guess, past formatting practice. The Board of Selectmen Education and Sewer Revenue Other Budgets look like they haven't had them. Um, back in the twenty one, twenty two mailer, we did have the proposed amounts for the farm improvements at water pollution and the renovation expansion of Latimer Project Costs. So that might just be a formatting history, but obviously you can, you could change history.
Yeah, we could change history. So we could put those numbers in there, even though they're in the top, up on top, right? Board of Selectmen, Board of Fin, of Ed is on top.
The, cuz the sewer is not, am I missing it somewhere?
No, it's not there, so that one.
It's not there anywhere, so I, I, you know, minimumally, I would include the, the number for the sewer fund if, to be consistent with four and five, like, we wanna be transparent, let's make sure everybody knows what they're voting on.
Mm-hmm.
Either we, I, I, I think we either include all the numbers or.
So my, I just, it's from, from my take, for the Flower Bridge, why don't we say the four ninety five um on that line? Um, I think that that's, I, I feel like that's transparent to the voter. They'll be able to review the ballot, the total budget is there, what we're asking for is the additional appropriation. That's the meat of the question, and this is our opportunity to add clarity. And um, I don't think that we need to talk about the um state grant funds appropriation or the um, uh, one million in donations, um, but the um, uh, five hundred thousand in capital reserve funds is probably the crux of what we're discussing here. Um, and uh, it'll be incumbent on individuals uh who are advocating uh for these two uh items to communicate that to, to voters and those who are concerned about that expenditure to do the same and clarify the, the total amounts, but all the total amounts are included there. And I think the opportunity to explain to the voters here is what we're doing this year uh on the budget mailer. And so since those numbers are already spelled out, I'd say put four ninety five on the Flower Bridge and um the five hundred thousand on the uh SIMPAC.
Okay, I, I, I'm, so, so for number three, we're gonna add the sewer fund number just for clarification, cuz it's not anywhere on the mailer. I think that's fair.
So you only wanna add, you mean the total for question three or just part of?
I think what Diana was saying is to include the sewer fund nineteen million, five one two, because we have the Board of Selectmen, Board of Ed numbers up on top, right?
And question number three includes sewer residential properties, all of those listed there? The nineteen million makes up all of those items?
Yeah.
Okay, so just the comma nineteen million, one fifty two or whatever it is.
Yeah, I think that's good. And then.
The same for number one and number two, just to be consistent, or just leave it off since it's above?
I mean, it's above, you could include it cuz we have space, so I don't see the harm in including it, I guess. Cuz these are all, these are all the things that are gonna be voted on, including those numbers, so I guess I would include the numbers, why not?
I'm in favor of that.
Um, and then the Drake Hill, as you had mentioned, Melissa, you know, it's, we're really just voting on the four ninety five supplemental cost. I don't know how you word that, but.
So, I wonder if, under special revenue budgets, that's where you notate, um, cuz, well, they're voting on the entire appropriation. Uh, but this is the amount that is funded from the town, so I don't know if you, um, because if we go with Kevin's suggestion of four ninety five and five hundred, um, instead of the entire appropriation amount, unless we parentheses, you know, the amount that's being um, funded by the town. Next to special revenue other budgets, is that where we notate um amount funded by the town? I don't know.
Well, it is all the town.
Yeah.
So I think we're Kevin saying, let's, who knew we were gonna be this detailed here? But for the, for the four, can't we just say, you know, Old Drake Hill Flower Bridge Rehabilitation, comma, you know, town portion four ninety five K?
Could we put like the, a plus sign, plus four ninety five K to designate this year's contribution? And separate it? Do you know what I mean?
I'm wondering if I could, if I can just do the funding breakdown, so in parentheses, you know, do the full amount because that's technically what they're voting on. And then in parentheses, if we can, you know, for number four, we say prior authorization, one point nine million, um, bond funds, four hundred ninety five. And then if we can squeeze it in for number five, just do the same, just to be extra clear. Um, it might be a little busy, but it, it accomplishes, I think, without, we have to be very careful with the mailer that we're not looking like we're doing anything that could be construed as advocacy, so this.
Right.
Um, and what we're having, we have always looked at um from someone from the state elections, of course, with permission to make sure that we're, we're good on that front, so when we make these changes, we'll send it back to them to make sure. Um, I'm just wondering if we can squeeze it in, should we just show the full funding breakdown? Since the question, they're gonna go read the question and it's gonna be broken down that way anyways. Um.
So I'm okay with only including uh this year's appropriation, and I appreciate the um opportunity for clarity and adding the additional numbers. I think that in some ways that it might actually um be more confusing uh to add them all, especially in a small space, especially in the context of the sample ballot is available and the full budget is available. And what we're trying to do is communicate to the voter that what they're um, uh, what they care about this year and what's impacting the total budgets is the number that is four ninety five for the Flower Bridge and, and five hundred thousand for the um, uh, for, for Performing Arts Center. That's just my take, and I'd be okay if we added the additional ones. I would just um think that you could either include the total amount or just amount that's for this year. And I think that it's fair to be concerned about um, uh, the voter's misunderstanding the total amount impacting this year's budget. Because this, this, this ballot and this referendum is for this year's budget.
I agree with, but if they did not pass this, that money would flow all the way back to the bottom line, although we've already earmarked earmarked those funds, they still are the voters' funds. So if for some reason they kick back on one of these things, the full amount would actually be held back. It would be re-appropriated or addressed in some manner, but they are actually voting on the full amount because that's the full amount that would go through, so.
Yeah, I kinda agree with you, Steve. I, I think, you know, the whole thing is, you know, at some point, it doesn't make, doesn't make sense. The reason why we have to do this is because it's a big expense and maybe at some point it's too expensive. So, I mean, I'm not saying it is, but, so I think the voter should know this is the full cost and do we really think it's worth three million dollars? I, I understand that it's been previously appropriated, but um, I think just being transparent and having all that information out there is, is, for me as a voter, I, I'd wanna know, this isn't, this isn't just a five hundred thousand dollar job, this is a three million dollar job. It's my opinion, but.
Is there a way we could put just like an asterisk and say, um, you know, see sample ballot for information, I don't know, like breakdown of, uh, somehow indicate that?
Yes, the full budget information is on the town's website, right? And, and the voter does have to do some work on their own, and I think that the, the mailer lets them know that the um referendum is coming, that they need to participate, and the largest piece of information that they need to know, rolled up to the top, like, this is what you need to know. And if you're concerned about the three million dollars like Curtis is saying, uh, or you're really in favor of the Flower Bridge and you want others to do it, here's, here's your opportunity to, to engage. So I don't disagree uh with where Curtis and Steve are coming from and including the full number. Um, I, I was um, uh, I understood the concern, though. Um, I I was um uh I understood the concern, though, about whether or not it reflected what they were voting on in this year's budget, and that's why I was okay with sharing one. I I but I I I really don't think that adding all three numbers on this small document adds the clarity for for many of the to the voters, uh just because it it ends up being uh too many numbers. I've been through this whole budget process. When I read through the motions, I had to read it two or three times just to make sure I understood how it was being worded. And uh that's appropriate. We have to do that legally, but um I want to be just cognizant of the average voter and where they're going to come at this. At tens of people will read this budget mailer. Um, and it's going to be the ones that are already supporting each one of the projects. So I think we have to get it right, of course, but I don't think we want to um uh kill ourselves over it.
Why can't we get rid of the graphic with the little vote thing going in the ballot box? Move everything up in that part of the of the mailer and have the room to give all information. I think full transparency, at least for me, and I think a lot of us is what we ran on for these positions. And I feel the full information should be given there and we're wasting that stupid box on the little votes going in. That's no information. That's completely a waste. The first sentence becomes one line instead of two. I don't think you have to put the words, don't forget to vote in. That's the reason of the mailer. And if we push everything up, we can include the additional numbers. I think it's a full, it's otherwise it's part of a picture. If you put just the total number, it's part of a picture, not a whole picture. If you put just the increase in, it's part of a picture, not the whole picture. So I would look at the mailer as a whole instead of trying to squeeze everything where it is right now. And it's unfortunate that we'd have to rework part of the mailer, but it's not a major thing to get rid of a graphic and give us the room.
The graph, the same graphic is on the the front where their address is. It says, don't forget to vote on Friday, May 10. So.
We're not insulting the designers here, just.
No, I didn't confrontationally. I'm just trying to.
You know, okay. All right, I'm gonna I'm gonna try to rein this in here. All right. If the the optimal way to do this, I believe, is to show item four with the full amount. And then if we can include underneath it, just exactly the way the numbers show on the referendum question.
Yes.
Right? And the same for the Flower Bridge. To show the numbers the way they're shown on the referendum question. Because that's what they're gonna read when they get to the bu- to the to the ballot. If there's room. I like everybody's ideas. I like Kevin's ideas. I like the full ideas. I I just think the clarification should be there. Those are my two top choices. My other choice is to just put an asterisk asterisk and say, refer to the detailed referendum question.
Yeah, but that's that's a disservice. You might as well just send a postcard out that says, do research online. You know, it's it's not, nobody's gonna do a two-step. They they hopefully will read this. They're not gonna read this and then pursue it online unless they're bored, you know?
Okay. So is every, how does, how does, how does everyone feel about including the total? And I think was Heather just like sort of a box under each item with the numbers broken down as they are in the referendum question?
I'm for that.
No.
What do you guys think? Is that consensual? Not taking a real vote here, but.
I would of course.
Okay, Kevin, you you think that will work?
I I not opposed to that. I want an additional point before we close discussion on the mailer, though.
Well, no, I have more mailer. This is just the tip of the iceberg on the mailer.
Oh, exciting.
So um it's Friday. Oh, it's not even Friday morning. Melissa, you think that that's doable for you guys?
I think so. Um, so you don't want it as like parenthetical, you want a separate thing underneath each of them, or are you okay with sort of being flexible?
Say that again?
Are you flexible with how it's presented, the breakdown? Like, can we do it in parentheses or you'd want it sort of separated out below each question number four and and number five in terms of break?
Can we give them liberty, Wendy, and let them make the decision on on how it's laid out as long as all the numbers are shown?
Perfect. Exactly.
Okay, and we're gonna add the dollar amounts next to number one, number two, and number three as well.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's good. Everybody good on that section?
Yep.
Um, can I just circle back to something quickly?
Sure, sure.
It's my understanding that if if these supplemental numbers do not are not approved, that the pre-approved numbers don't just go back to the bottom line. They still need to go towards those proj- projects. Isn't that correct?
I don't, I heard that too.
Because that's what was, okay.
The whole project wouldn't go down just the additional amounts.
So they might have to do it with whatever the new expense, right, cut cut back on the project or something like that. So so yeah, that's a good point, Heather. Okay, so Kevin, since you have a question, I'm gonna let you ask it.
Um, my only thought was on uh the first page on the bottom left where the budget drivers are listed. I was uh gonna ask if we can include a a fourth bullet that says uh something along the lines of uh payments to uh the debt service on the Latimer Lane project started.
Ooh. I like that.
I do too.
Because we read that was written somewhere too, right? Didn't somebody comment on that somewhere? What do you think of that, Melissa?
So originally didn't include, obviously debt service would have been, you know, one of the primary expenditure drivers because um the Board of Finance, you know, made the decision to restructure our upcoming debt issuance um such that we delayed it and saved on that line item. Um, you know, it went from, you know, over a million dollar increase or whatever it was to about 200,000 increase. So we sort of left that off as a driver. Um, but it's up to you if you want to, you know, call that out.
Well, it it was called out somewhere and I can't remember where I read that. I don't know if it was on in something formal or informal, but it did, it did create the 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 cost to the residents that was pre-approved is how I, you know, we all approved it. Um, so we're paying for what we've pri- prior approval, which I think is Kevin's point, right?
Yeah, I I my thought is that uh it's something that I've explained and talked with people and they, and they understand, oh, okay. So what's happening this year is the average voter. Uh, what 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 is it? Okay, so we started out uh uh less on revenue because of the um uh motor vehicle uh reimbursement. Uh, no grand list growth, which, you know, you might have anticipated. Obviously, you could put inflation on there too, but I think that's a cop out. Uh, but the reality is member voters, we needed to do this Latimer Lane project and the bill has come due. Um, and so we're paying it. And so when you're looking at the increases this year, uh, you know, Tom's getting a great salary, but that's not what's throwing it off. Uh, it's it's the fact that we're paying this debt service on on the the school project. So I just, I I think that it's helpful. Uh, if others don't agree or we can't put it on there, um, I'm I'm happy to back away, but if it's possible to fit in there, I think it adds clarity for the voter instead of taking it away.
I also think, um, you know, when we have different referendum um referendums that come up and such as the Latimer Lane and when we had Meadowwood, that it allows voters to understand this is what you voted for and you know, we make different decisions ourselves on what we're going to pay for, but this is something that our residents voted for and is on here because this is what they came out for.
Right.
Yeah, I I I like.
It's almost like a good follow-through.
Yeah, it is a good fa- I think that's a great idea. If we could, however, you can word that, Melissa, I think to reflect that on here.
Okay.
Because it it gives the onus on the tax, the voters, they approve this, so it's not, it's not just us raising taxes, right? Like um, okay, I think that's great. Um, I have a couple of things. Anybody else have other things? Okay, um. Well, here's one thing that I I and I talked to Melissa already about this. So we keep, we and this was Heather brought this up when the um public hearing notice went out, you know, we keep showing it's an 8.82 decrease. But if you kind of normalize it, right, with the Board of Ed and our numbers, it's actually uh two point, what I'm gonna use, 2.93, which it's not anymore eh budget increase without the ARPA numbers. It doesn't show that anywhere. And I I don't know if we can show that, but, you know, it it just, I I I think it's misleading and which is why we put out that press release. So I was thinking, is it possible to show that somewhere? You know, and I don't know what the wording is. Is it normalized? Is it, you know, comparatively that the budget Board of Selectmen budget without ARPA, I guess, really was a two-point something increase?
Yeah, I and I would like, I agree with you, Wendy, on on this because I I think that it, one, it's misleading and allowing or making voters think that we were able to come up with such a huge decrease in our operating costs. And it just gives the perception of so then why next year do you not have this? You couldn't find more savings? You know, it just kind of looks like we found savings and all these efficiencies and extra things that realistically, obviously, would not have happened.
Well, it's also.
Uh, can you make it part of the the third bullet point under Board of Selectmen budget? Because it almost acknowledges there.
Uh, that's what I was thinking, that black strip. I think there's plenty of room in there to add that like as a fourth bullet.
Right, because it doesn't make sense. If people are gonna say, how come on one line balance rate be raised by local taxes, the final percentage is 3.97, nine, 7%. But then um in the black bar, it says increase uh change of 4.68%. We understand why it's 4.68 versus 3.97, but somebody's gonna look at them and be like, well, how come here it says our taxes are gonna go up 3.97? Whatever here it says, uh, it's going up 4.68 and they're giving me the 4.68. Do you know what I'm saying? Because in that, if you look under the budget overview, all of those numbers, those are where, you know, you have your uh savings of 8.82% and in the final line, it says balance to be raised by local taxes percent change is 3.97. Right? So somebody reads that and says, okay, there's my 3.97 taxes that are gonna go up. And then in the black bar, it cl- you know, it says the increase is 4.68%, which is what we know is going to be go- what is passed through to the voters. I don't want the voters to say, how come one box says it's 3.97 and another thing says 4.68? And I'm in the end paying 4.68.
I see your point, but there's some other stuff going on into the 4.68 that is not referenced here from the 3.97. So let, so I can we can we just go back to, I think, I think it would be good to have a fourth bullet under the Board of Selectmen budget to just show the, you know, the with without ARPA percentage budget impact of 2.93, whatever it is.
The new spending includes increase of 963,000. That's what we were attempting to convey. Do you want us to strike that and just do the percentage instead?
So I I, Melissa, that was going to be my point. And and Wendy, I actually feel like it's clear. And I I appreciate the um desire to want to be absolutely transparent with the voter. Um, but I I think that it actually is quite clear here. Uh, you start putting percentage decreases and increases and start changing them around. I think that the fact that it says that new spending is 963 actually tells a better story than having two percentage numbers, a year-over-year increase or decrease. I also think that in some ways it's informative for the voter to know that there's an 8.82% decrease because those services or activities or whatever, regardless of the source of funding, were still activities that were being performed by the community. And now we're not funding them through taxes. We're we're not doing them. Uh, so that's a change. And I think that that also in itself is clear. Um, the final point on that is I think that there were some restrictions and rules regarding accepting the ARPA funding and how we presented the budgets in the future. And I'd want to make sure that we're being um consistent with what we agreed to by either saying the ARPA money was in there or not in there, because I I think that we had some rules that we had to follow.
So we had the problem two years ago. Our expenditures went up up because of ARPA. Um, and so we sort of did the same thing where under budget drivers, we we acknowledged the ARPA funding. Um, so that's why we sort of did the opposite this year. We said that that was spent fully spent. Um, so it it does skew it. Um, there's no doubt about it, but.
Yeah, I I guess I'm still torn that it's, because this, even when I look at the chart on the first page, you know, you just look at it, the Board of Ed, you know, they had a 4.41 operating budget increase. They got some ARPA money in there too. I mean, it benefited them, but it hits us. And then it shows, oops, we just dropped to 9% of our our budget. Um.
But we still had a spending increase of almost a million.
We did.
But I think that's clear. In my mind, I I look at that, it's clear to me as a voter that there's, wait, there's new spending. Oh, the decrease that they're showing is because of the ARPA funding they got. It's it, to me, it's on its face. It's there.
I mean, I'm not gonna.
Decrease it's, and then you say, why is there a decrease? Third bullet says it.
Okay, well, you're smarter than the average bear.
Oh, well, I I don't agree with that necessarily, but um I I do want to be clear to the voter. There's no doubt. Uh, I but I I also caution that putting more on it sometimes doesn't add clarity.
Okay.
Melissa, keeping it at.
Go ahead.
All right. I'll just say I agree with Kevin. There's so many numbers. It's like one more number is.
Okay.
Melissa, is it um is keeping it as it is in that line consistent? I guess we want to keep some consistency as well.
Yeah, yeah.
For the people who 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 read the mailer, they they probably have read read it last year and the year before, so consistency is probably good.
Although I I read it, but I can't tell you what it looked like last year, other than a bunch of graphs and numbers. I couldn't say, what last year you had this on there?
Okay, so let's let's just leave that as is. All right, we we've 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 messed around. Let's leave it. How's that? Everybody happy with that? Clear? All right. Um, okay, so I had another thing. Um, so I I did want to know the mill rate impact does not include fire here, correct? And we've shown it both ways. Can we at least say that? Because in some cases, we show it with fire. In some cases, we're not showing it with fire. And does this? And I'm assuming the impact, tax impact, and does that include fire or not include fire?
Yeah, that's a good question. There's a note at the bottom of that.
Oh, I see.
Mill rate does not include, that is town only, but the the median home impact, you're correct, that does assume the fire district. Um, I I think because that's the way we always talk about it during public meetings is, you know, the overall impact. Um, so that's the mill rate impact is only town and the estimated taxes.
So the mill rate impact does not show fire, but you're saying the home impact does? Okay, is is if everybody thinks that's fine, that's I'm not gonna push that one. I just. Okay, there's no comment there. So um, the other thing, I don't know if we have to mention this here. Um, do we all, I know the annual median home value what that we've been talking about was 39 or 39800. Is that what this is based on? Okay, and do do we use, we do we never call that out, I'm guessing, to go back to Heather's um follow the old stuff?
In the Board of Finance stuff, I know that they show that in their materials.
Because I don't know, most some people, I don't even know anymore what a home median impact is. I mean, the cost of.
We've showed the actual median home value.
We don't, is what you're saying?
Have not in the past, no. I'm looking at last, actually, it's 202 years ago. Um.
Yeah, we haven't shown it in old ones.
Okay.
Yeah, this can't be the budget detail or intro to public finance uh documented. Really just want it to be you know, on its face, like voters, here's what you need to know. And then here's the URLs and cocked your uh elected officials if you have questions on the details.
Okay. You can go, you can share that with the residents. Go.
I'm gonna give them uh your personal email address.
Thank you. Give them myself.
That phone number.
It's in your, it's in your first selectman uh update, so.
It is. Okay, all right. So, all right, I'm gonna go back to this. I don't know why I'm punchy this morning. Um, we're gonna leave the black box as is. We feel that it represents the increase. We're we're okay with the mill rate impact being exclusive of the fire district, but the home impact being inclusive of the fire impact. Because I don't think anybody will really know the difference, right? Um, Um. I think that's all I had. If everybody's excited about that. One thing I just wanna mention, and this is just a typing thing, Melissa, is um, because I'm very anal about layout, the demographic reference group and average, the, I don't know if those are supposed to be in those highlighted sections, but they're off. Just, that's just a little. You know what I'm saying? Just, it's just a line down. Anybody's, maybe it's just what I printed. Yeah, I I'll tell you about it later. It's just a little, it's a little thing. Um, or, okay, I guess, are we good with the mailer for now? Everybody okay with the changes that we suggested for the mailer? Because then I'll ask for the motion.
Substantive changes, yes. Some design ones though, too. I would make the uh, May tenth date just larger somewhere, front or back.
Yeah.
I don't care. Just just uh, like uh, next to where the charts are or on the front where it says, don't forget. Um, if you, if, at least if the voter sees that, then they'll know that's a call to action. And then the last thought, just a small design thing. The little white bar for the key facts about the public schools is encroaching on the the black uh, area over there. Whoever the designer is will probably.
Yeah.
But just wanted to call that out for visibility. But all the rest, I'm ready to vote.
So uh, uh, those are great observations because I saw that little line. I was gonna mention that. And I also, too, I agree that the May tenth should be much larger on that front of the mailer. Because the picture could be smaller, the May tenth should be bigger. Um, okay. So ask, I'm gonna ask for someone to make the motion effective April eighteenth, twenty twenty four, to approve and authorize issuance of the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five budget mailer as presented and modified recommended modi- with the recommended modifications. Staff is author, oh, staff is authorized to make changes as recommended by the SEC or Town Attorney.
Sum up.
Second.
Any further discussion? So all those in favor of the budget mailer, say aye, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Who thought this would last? Is this a, is this a record for the budget mailer meeting?
But honestly, this is such a unique year between those two referendum questions. You know, normally it's, do you wanna fund two point five million dollars for an irrigation system at the farms to be funded by bonds? I mean, this, these two questions are certainly unusual in the way that we're funding them. Um, or, you know, the the breakdown of the funding sources. So um, definitely appreciate why it takes so much time to go through that. And I'm um, glad to come up with something that I think will be clear.
Thanks. Okay, so we voted on that, right? It's, okay, we voted, sorry, losing track already. So now we could ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, how?